Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, Dover School Committee, Sherburne School Committee, and the Dover Sherburne Union 50 Superintendency Committee for today, Tuesday, April 27th, 2021, 6:30 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas is posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. First on the agenda is community comments. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for us to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. Do we have any community comments this evening? Dorothea, go ahead. You just have to take yourself off mute?
I apologize. I just corrected my lighting.
Oh, you didn't have a question?
No, sorry about that.
Chairs, do you see any questions? I don't. Okay. The next up on the agenda is to welcome the new DS Regional School Committee member. I would like to hand that off to Maggie.
Hi, thank you so much, Leslie. Just on behalf of the Regional School Committee, I wanted to welcome Ms. Shova Frey to the Regional School Committee. She has been appointed to fill a vacancy due to a member resignation last month. According to our bylaws, whenever a member resigns within, you know, a week or so, we needed to post for that opening. We did so. We kept it open for two weeks. We had five applicants and four of those were able to schedule interviews, were interested in interviews. We had really wonderful candidates come and we, Lynn and I, as the members from Dover, met. It was a hard decision, but we have nominated Shoba to fill the vacancy until the term expires at the election, which is May 17th. And then at that point, I believe Ms. Frey is going to launch a write-in campaign for the seat. Thanks and welcome to the committee, Shoba. I don't know if you want to say?
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Hi, everyone. And I guess I look forward to meeting you guys in person if we ever do.
Welcome, Shoba. We look forward to working with you. Next on the agenda, we will have an update on the Sustainability Task Force. Andrew, could you please guide us through this update?
Sure. Thank you very much, Leslie. So this evening, I'm actually joined by quite a few members of the Sustainability Task Force. And we really just wanted to provide the three school committees with an update of, you know, of the things that we've been working on. We have kind of followed the same model as the Start Times Task Force and the Start Times Two Task Force and the reopening Task Force in that we have, we have like a steering committee and then we break into subcommittees. And so what we, what we wanted to share with you is our, our website, which really, which has not been posted yet, but we wanted you to see it before we put it up. And it should give you a good snapshot as to the work we've been doing. I'm super proud of the kids, especially who've participated in this process. Each of our subcommittees has student participants and I think mine is actually exclusively students except for me, and I'm sort of a student. I consider myself still a learner. And so, so with no further ado, I want to introduce Catherine Whittle. She is the co-chair of the Sustainability Task Force. She is a 12th grader at Dover Sherburne. And Catherine, can you just say hello? Can we see you?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, great. So thanks, Catherine. And so are you, are you able to screen share now, Catherine? Perfect. So do you want to talk people through before we get to the subcommittees just about any of this, Catherine?
Okay, so like Dr. Kio said, this is like one of our startups this year. We've been very focused on how we can make our communities and school systems more sustainable. So due to COVID, we did have to adapt a bit to like what's feasible. So we have four subcommittees. We have water, education, politics, and food. Each of those are, of course, addressing issues that we feel our school committee, our school communities have. So we can start with education.
Yes, and so the education subcommittee is actually led by Catherine and you can see the members listed there. It's a great group of people. They've been working very hard and I'll let you say your part, Catherine.
All right, so my subcommittee has been very focused in how we can reach people in terms of what's available to them in environmental fields. Because oftentimes, we feel like we're used to seeing science, like documentaries and fieldwork, but there's actually a lot of different professions you can go into. And the environment just obviously ties into everything. So how can we adjust curriculums to include environmental subjects, like maybe in an art class, focusing on like 3D models of fish? Or in an English class, we talk a lot about Shakespeare. What about the surrounding geography during that time? So one of the things we've been working on recently is a career series. And we're waiting to get some videos back, where we've reached out to people, mostly in the community, who have various positions like sustainability coordinator or artist, just a variety of people, even like someone in environmental law and consulting. So all of these will be housed, will be about like five to 10 minutes and students can come on here and see what's available to them. Move on to food.
So is there someone who's willing to, from the food committee, who's willing to speak to this? Is it Ella, perhaps?
Yeah, I, I can. So we've mainly been focused on poking, focusing on planting pollinator-friendly flowers and bushes on the middle school campus by their garden to like help the existing vegetables that are there. And we're also focusing on the school's cafeteria and hoping to like increase the recycling and composting and having a variety of vegan and vegetarian options on the menu.
Thanks, Ella. And you'll notice outside the central office, actually a couple of places, you might notice the milkweed plants, and I'm constantly asking Chris Hendricks not to cut them down because those are in fact pollinators. And they are the one plant that monarch butterflies lay their, their eggs on. And their population's been, has been decimated down to some arguments are 90%. So protecting that species without pollination, places like, for example, how would it impact us? It would impact Douse's Orchard, for example. They depend on pollination. They, I believe, if they're like other farms, have to bring in beehives in order to pollinate their apple trees. Otherwise, the fruit just doesn't grow to its potential. So anything we can do to keep pollinator plant friendly plants around is a positive thing. So thank you for that, Ella. And I don't know if Nick is on. Nick, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, good man. So do you mind talking about your, your committee and what you guys are trying to do?
Yeah, um, so a couple of years ago, me and a group of friends banned plastic bags in Dover. So in our subcommittee, we're trying to do the same thing in Sherburne. And right now, we're like planning when to go get like signatures to make sure we have support for, for this, to make sure we're not doing it for nothing. And and then we're gonna get everything transferred from Dover over so it meets like what it needs to be for Sherburne. So like get the bylaw written and then we should present, or we're hoping to present to Sherburne in the fall. And that's what we're doing.
That was, I don't know if folks were at the Dover Town Meeting. Nick, who were the other kids that you did that with? I mean, I know you spearheaded it, but you had other students who worked with you. It was a CAGS project, I believe, from the middle school. And they did pass the ban on plastic bags and Nick and his friends were instrumental in doing that. And we, he and his group are wondering why, why can't we do that in Sherburne? So they're, they're being very strategic about that because it is political. You have to win the support of the selectmen. And of course, they have to work with the businesses in town and maintain a healthy balance. So this, this group, I think, has some really good plans in that regard. Was there anything else you wanted to share on that, Nick?
I think that's basically all we're doing right now.
And so the water subcommittee is my group, but Angela Lynn is our, is our chair, the leader of the subcommittee. But although Erin and Sasha, Maddie, Chloe have all been really active participants in this. Do you want to talk about it, Angela?
Oh, sure. So mainly, we've been focusing on our watershed and how we can make choices to prevent it from becoming like contaminated because that really affects the wildlife there. So it does also matter to us because many at Dover Sherburne have well water. And so our choices will come around and, you know, bite us if we aren't smart about like what we use on our lawns and on our roads. So for, because of this, we researched the differences in chemical and organic fertilizers because a lot of chemical fertilizers don't break down in the environment and are really harmful to our watersheds. And so we put together this webpage to let everyone know the main differences. And then we also included some tips that you can follow to help reduce your water use and then also how you can use fertilizers more effectively. We also, we also, no, that's right. We also researched cleaning products because that's especially relevant during this time. And also the difference between like organic and inorganic cleaners because we're using it at such a high rate these days and we need to make sure that the products we're using are safe for both us and our environment. And so we put together, again, a small page and it has a few tips at the bottom that you guys can follow that will give you, you know, that hopefully will help keep you and your family safe. We also were able to receive funding for 10 new water bottle refilling stations, which is great news. And because we want to make sure all the kids during this time of COVID know about the rules with water found in and that they are allowed to use them and drink during class, we put up some posters around the school to keep everyone updated on that. And finally, we would like the school district to consider like reviewing our water usage and our appliances because, for example, our dishwashers, our toilets, they are being used at such a high frequency. But if they're constantly, if they're not water efficient, we're constantly wasting so much water that could be saved. So if we, when we make the choices to replace them, hopefully we will choose to replace, say, our toilets with ones that might have like a two-flush method where you can do like solid and liquid waste that will save a lot of water. I think that is it for now. Thank you.
Great job, Angela. And, you know, along those lines, if you think about those of you who are on Nextdoor, it seems to me every other week, there's some kind of comment about bald eagles being sighted, especially along the Charles River. The bald eagles were obviously not around here for decades, decades and decades, and they weren't around because of chemicals. Essentially pesticides were, you know, impacting these. The fish they ate were coming out of contaminated waters that had pesticides in them and made their eggshells very thin. And every time they went to lay their eggs, they crushed it. And that's why the bald eagle population was decimated until the federal government stepped in and stopped allowing the DDT. So these are the things, when we think about the watershed, you think about how many of us live, literally, including Dover Sherburne, within a mile of the river. And anything that we spread on our fields, on our, our parking lots, that runs off of our roofs, that runs off of our property, period, that we pour into the drains, that we allow to drain into the, the waterways, gets into the river and eventually makes its way to the ocean. So those of you who have been to places where there is this gross algae, there are giant algae blooms floating around in the ocean that essentially stem from all of this. So we're just trying to raise awareness. That's what the subcommittee, this, this, all of our subcommittees are trying to do. We've got great people here. I'm sorry that I'm not going to continue this work unless it's as a citizen. But I really desperately want us as a system to continue to keep this focus. And I have to give Dawn Fatori a lot of credit because she is really, really being conscientious. She works very closely with Janelle Madden, our food service director. They have been doing a great job with composting, thanks in large part to the efforts of the kids and the, the green team at the high school. But, you know, everyone has to chip in and Dawn has been great with that. We have, we are looking at our energy management system and how we can be more efficient with that. We've already done a lot of work with the LED lighting in the middle school. We are thinking, we've said to the school committees before, we're thinking about when we replace our roofs, how much waste, rubber and toxic waste goes into a landfill when you strip a roof as opposed to refurbishing it? So same thing with the solar panels. I know Dawn's working with some folks. They've got a lot of cool ideas coming. So I just hope that the school committees will be, and communities will be supportive of this work as we continue. I want to, I just want to thank all of our, I'm not going to go through all the members, but we have just such a great, great talented team. The adults have been awesome because they have to sit on their hands. Essentially, we can't help ourselves. We want to talk and I'm insisting that the kids lead these groups and, and participate in the conversations. And so for that, I am truly grateful because our students will not learn how to do these things unless we insist upon it. So thank you all for that and thank you guys for coming tonight. I don't know if there's any questions for the kids or for any of us.
I just want to step in here real quick and say I was thrilled to see the kids present tonight. I think that should happen more often. I think it's great for them. I think it's great for us. And you all did a wonderful job. I'm proud of you. I do have a quick question. I'm just wondering who's going to spearhead this, Andrew? When you leave, is there a plan for who's gonna kind of?
Well, we haven't, we haven't named someone. But I will tell you, one of the things that we were very conscious of was making sure that we had students from all grades. Catherine is also leaving as a graduate and she's been hugely instrumental in the success of this. But we have some very, very invested adults from the community. Some are here tonight, some could not make it. We have teachers in the system who've been super engaged. And we just basically haven't established that yet, but we still have a little time left.
Um, I hope, I hope someone will step up into that position. I am also sad to hear that Catherine is graduating, but um, do we have any other school committee members with question or comment? Maggie, go ahead.
And I also, I saw Colleen has her hand up too. So I guess first I wanted to say hu- huge thank you to all the students who have worked on this project all year. Just looking through the website just now and seeing all the names, it clearly has been a ton of work, some of which I've seen, you know, just around campus or been aware of and others, I had no idea. So thank you for doing all that work on behalf of all of us. I'm wondering, are we still using, is that water filler project that brings water bottle water out to the turf field still operational? Do we know? I think it was somebody's project.
I actually don't, I don't, I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
It was maybe one of the Phelan's Boys Eagle Scout project was like running water out to the turf field so water bottles could be filled up on the field. And I just don't know if that's still operational.
That's a great question. I don't, I honestly don't know the answer to that, but we can certainly find out. I think the water bottle refilling stations, I think I may have mentioned to you guys that the DSCF has been supportive of those all along. And they, they just gave us some, we haven't started putting those in yet. Have we, Dawn?
No, we received one for each school, but they're backorder. They're due in mid next.
Right, but we can look into that question.
We did, we have installed several during the year. Couple, four went into the region already this year.
Because I do think also on the topic of the plastic bags, the plastic bottles, like anything we can do to get rid of the bottles in a way that doesn't, you know, make a mess or whatever is so helpful. Um, I was curious if we have looked into and/or if this group has looked into the kind of fertilizer that we're using on our fields and whether or not it's comporting with what the recommendations of the Sustainability Committee would be.
We, so we do use all organic products.
Right. Um, and then my last question is just, is there any way that this committee could or it would be appropriate at all just to look at our whole like physical plant? Like I sort of wonder whether or not it might be cool to make like, um, I know some organizations say like we're going to be zero carbon or something, but like some overall metric where especially at the region, we could say like, right now, here's what our physical plant is using. And everything that we do, whether it's, you know, we replace the roof in a sustainable way or we at some point add solar panels or we increase, you know, I know we've talked this year about increasing insulation in the buildings. Everything that we would do that would get us closer to, you know, some goal. And, you know, I don't know if zero carbon is the metric or what, but I would love to set something up like that so that as the time goes on and different groups do different work, we can kind of see our progress towards, you know, create, and I, I don't know enough about it to know like what is the right metric. But I'm wondering, because I think all this work is awesome and I would love for kids to build to see how it's making a difference, like, you know what I mean? Like, um, just sort of compiling over time in terms of the impact that we make.
Right, it's, it's.
Planting a seed.
It's so much easier, Maggie, when we, when places built brand new and they're LEAT certified and, and the kids can see on the walls the kinds of energy usage and they can track whether or not we're making progress. We're not that sophisticated, but Dawn is working with representatives from Amaresco, which is the company you see on the, as you get onto the Mass Pike, on doing an assessment of where we're using and energy less efficiently. David Green, I see, is on here. You can't miss his house on the way over to the region, the Zero Carbon Home. And he keeps us honest, correct, David?
I try.
It's not easy, but it's because, because it's difficult for us to change, right? To change our ways of thinking. It's, that's why a person like David or Dorothea, the Sustainability Coordinator from Sherburne, some of the folks who were instrumental in getting a Sustainability Coordinator from Sherburne are on here, Joanne Cunningham. I think my mother was going to join us. She was another person who helped to get a Sustainability Coordinator. These are the folks who will keep us, us, the leaders of the system, honest. So that instead of saying, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do some solar panels and only buying six, we'll actually be a little more aggressive and try and do something that's actually meaningful that, that lowers our carbon footprint. And we, we, so we're confident. The pandemic definitely did not help. It set us back a little bit because I feel like we had a lot of momentum and we lost some of that. But even today, Dawn was mentioning to me that we're, she's working on copy machines at the region that are essentially rebuilt. Now, if you announce that to people, they're going to say, oh, it's not going to be as good. And it's absolutely not true. They look great and you're just not throwing as much waste into the planet. Again, I've said this to you guys many times. The thing that got me really on this was a presentation to the environmental science class where on the plastic in the oceans, the amount of tiny pieces of plastic in the oceans, it is catastrophic and it has to stop. So when you just throw out your copy machines, it doesn't just go away. It's broken up somewhere and it ends up in the waterways and into the ocean. So it's really been a, a great learning experience for me to do this. So proud of the kids, I can't even tell you. And I'm psyched because we do have a number of ninth graders on here and 10th graders who are going to continue to carry the torch. But that said, I do hope that people will continue from the school committees to, to send representatives and that they will continue to engage as well. Because it, it is about holding ourselves accountable. I, you know, with that said, we're, we're doing pretty well.
Well, thank you to everybody on that group.
Um, thank you, Maggie. Colleen, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd just like to applaud the efforts of the students that are on the call and that have been working on the committees. It's really awesome to see. I think it's really important that schools are forward-looking. Just it's, it should be our mindset. We should be thinking about the environment that these students are going to be living in for the rest of their lives when they leave and what kind of environment are we, you know, leaving to them? So I love the leadership from the students. So good job there. I am interested in possibly an energy audit, if that has been discussed. Because I know there are some really interesting ways of gathering solar energy from beyond just roofs. Just, you know, I know Liz Grossman in the community has a solar flower or two. Is that right? So there's, and which can turn with the sun. I just, I know there's a lot of, you know, progressive technology out there. Also ways of reclaiming carbon that I think we could look at in terms of how we're composting our own fields and how we're, we're looking at the broader picture of Dover. But as our schools as polluters and how we can, you know, make that, you know, we can reduce that as much as possible. I really second the plastic bottle, getting rid of the plastic bottles being sold at lunches. My kids aren't allowed to buy them. They're $1. They're this big and it really hurts me to see them in, in the schools, in our schools, in a town like Dover. I just think we're smarter than that and I think the bottle filling stations are really important. Encouraging kids, it becomes a culture of bringing your water bottle to school. Everybody does it. You've got your name on it. This is where you put it when you come in. This is where, if we make it part of the culture, we progress with our students. They're going to be doing this. This is their, this is, they are woke, they're woke, they're awake to these issues. And I think it's time for us to join them. So thank you.
I, just to answer your question, the, the energy audit is part of the work with Amaresco, correct, Dawn?
Correct. So two years ago, we actually at the region had an energy review. So any maintenance projects that we have going forward, we have more of a plan for making them more energy efficient. And as you know, both Dover and Sherburne are members of the green community. So even at the town level, there's already that focus there to make sure that any renovations, upgrades that are done in any of the buildings in both these towns are sort of energy sustainability and then looking for green community funding. So we've got, we've got two really invested towns. And I think we're all working together, you know, to achieve some of the goals that you guys are speaking about tonight.
Catherine, if you don't mind, Leslie, can I ask Catherine to just say a few words about what we've also discussed in terms of writing to the community? Because I think that's an important part of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead Catherine.
Um, so we have been writing a newspaper article that we're gonna send to the hometown weekly to have published. And we are also going to put it in the parent newsletters. So basically just an outline of what each subcommittee is doing, a little bit more consolidated. Um, so everyone can see our efforts and hopefully join in.
Yeah, this is really about, again, uh, informing the public that this body of people exist. Uh, Dorothea is uh, is doing a ton of work, leading a lot of work in Sherburne. There are, it's not to say it's not happening in Dover, they do not have a coordinator, correct Dorothea? But they have a group of people who are highly invested in this kind of work, is that correct?
Um, Andy, thanks for introducing me and um, I'm happy to meet everybody from the school committee for the first time. Yes, I'm the sustainability coordinator in Sherburne since a year. And there's not an equivalent person in uh, Dover yet, but there's a group of engaged citizens, especially your recycling committee. Is very engaged and there's also work going on at the new um, is it the community center? Uh, I think in Dover that is being embraced to be net zero, so um. There, there is work going on and I'm, as Dawn mentioned before. Uh, there are, there's a town planner in uh, the Gino Calucci. Who is um, doing his kind of gr- green community grants, applications in Sherburne and has done. And Dover is a green community since a little while and there will be more work to be done at the regional schools. I wanna echo, um, for me, my position is about reaching out to the schools and residents of Sherburne. But my efforts are not uh, limited to Sherburne, I I will work with Dover students. Uh, like Catherine and others on things that are important to the studentship and I wanna echo. That the school committee um, should be more involved in what's going on in that regard. Because we wanna include the entire community, school families in embracing to reduce emissions in their homes and also on the campus. So this is a larger effort and I wanna not take up too much time here and maybe ask to come back at some point. And that you guys know, there's a, a climate bill that was recently signed uh, by Charlie Baker. For the entire Commonwealth to come down fifty percent on fossil fuel emissions, so greenhouse gas emissions by twenty fifth, by twenty thirty. So that's something that we all need to embrace and do a little bit uh, of work and contribute. And I'd happy to give the school committee a little bit of ideas how, how you can can basically message that. To the community as well.
Thank you, Dorothea.
Thank you, thank you Andy.
Uh, yes, Kate Potter, go ahead.
Thank you, I just wanna say quickly, first of all, this is really amazing work and I'm grateful for the, all the adults. But especially grateful for the students who are working on this. Um, it, it might be too hard to do this this year, but I'm wondering if your group might find a way. To give a presentation to Pine Hill and Chicaring, because um, you know. The younger kids would much rather learn something from high school students than they would from the rest of us. And I think it would mean a lot coming from you, it would show your leadership. Uh, it would be a great way for them to think, you know, yeah, I'd like, I'm gonna do something like that in middle school and high school, so. Just to put it on your radar, I know Pine Hill has an all-school meeting, I'm not sure if Chicaring has something similar, but um. I think the kids would be really receptive to it.
Completely agree, and one of the things, by the way, Kate, that uh, that we know is true. Is that scaring kids about the environment is not nearly as effective as teaching them to love it.
Yeah.
And um, I still remember as a student uh, being out in the woods at the fraud pond behind the uh, softball field. Uh, just the teachers would bring us out there, I mean, that was just part of the deal, we were outside and uh, learning about the surroundings. And I think that has a much greater lasting effect.
Yeah.
So thank you for that, it's a great suggestion.
I, I agree Kate, I, I just wanted to, Dorothea, I, I also like, would like the school communities to learn a little bit more. I know both Liz and I, two members on here, we, we both have bees and uh. We're doing our part and I, so I did love to hear about all the pollinators, the flowers that you guys are maintaining and planting, so. Think it's a great, it's a great initiative.
Thanks Leslie, I'm happy to come back anytime, I know you guys have a lot on your plate. But we just started a new website and some initiatives that the school committee could um, learn about. And as I said, taking um, also kind of like a voice messaging this to the community at large. I'm working with Pine Hill School right now on a project that's called Bird Hill um, restoration of a bird hill garden. And we will have a virtual fair later in June and that was supported by a grant uh, through the Greenspoon Foundation, so. We get some traction here on educating kids on the ecology, the importance of groundwater, pollinators, uh, bird-friendly gardening. That we also wanna mess- message to the homeowners in Sherburne and Dover that have fairly large um, acreage. And that are, you know, we wanna educate them to be responsible, property owners and to support. Um, the eco-network and our birds and pollinators. So there is educational programming on the way that I would like to talk about with you if there is some time in, in the, you know, next month or so.
Great, I'm definitely open to that, would, I'd love to exchange emails.
Wonderful.
Do we have any other questions for anyone? Any, I don't see any, Catherine, can I just ask you real quick, what are you majoring in in college?
I intend to be on a law track and I'll have a background in environmental studies probably.
That's great, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to the next item, which is the superintendent update, Andrew?
Yes, um, and just before I do that, uh, Leslie, I just wanna be sure that our students and and reps know that they don't need to stay. They're welcome to certainly, but I know some, some of the kids who needed to get to the rehearsal for the show, so. Um, so everyone's free to go in that regard, yes, so um, so much to talk about with the reopening. Obviously, our elementary schools are now in five days. Uh, with rotating half-days, those are in-person half-days. And our middle school and high school began this week to um, to the five-day schedule. In person, so uh, they've been in four weeks, uh, sorry, four days a week uh, for the month of April. Um, so this is real progress. Along these lines, we've had uh, you know, it, it's certainly, it's, it's not been easy. Uh, our teachers and administrators have had to really work to accommodate the larger numbers. Especially with the um, the distancing uh, required by the state. There's been some good news in that regard in terms of close contacts. Uh, you know that in the past, if somebody uh, was a close contact within six feet of someone who had uh, COVID nineteen. They had to quarantine and so this was really disruptive to students' educations. And uh, there's been some, some real headway on that and the number's been reduced to three feet. You'd still be a close contact that's at six feet, but you wouldn't need to quarantine unless you spent fifteen minutes or more. In uh, immediate contact really, within three feet of, of someone who was sick. So that's, that's a big, big uh, uh, favor to the schools and to the families. Uh, and I think in part, it was because uh, it was done because uh, pool testing was really discouraged. Uh, was being discouraged by families who were saying, I can't afford to have my kid be out of school, because they were a close contact. So I, I, and I, and I, I, I think it was just leaving people with a bad taste in their mouth in terms of participation in the pool testing. Um, our pool testing, by the way, I brought some numbers just to uh, let people know. We're right now at three hundred and thirty-eight uh, individuals participating. So at the region, a hundred and forty, at Chicaring, a hundred and seven, and ninety-one at Pine Hill School. Um, we just got some results yesterday, uh, uh, negative of all of our pools. We have had two hundred and sixty-seven pools to date. Uh, two hundred and sixty-five of those pools were negative, two were positive and the pool sizes run from five to fifteen. So we obviously want to encourage people to participate in the pool testing, we think the pool testing is gonna be around for a while. Uh, all indications are that COVID nineteen is not going away overnight. And uh, what we really would like to see is us return to, to some of the things that we so enjoy and value. For example, kindergarten kids being able to sit on uh, on the carpet and be read a story. As opposed to in rows in the, these desks, uh, which is just heartbreaking. We want to see some of that be made possible, we believe things like pool testing can make that happen. So this is really important, I'm super proud of Kate McCarthy and Jill Fedor and our nursing staff and all the folks. Adam, uh, please help me Dawn or Beth. Uh, Adam is our um, pool testing coordinator, he's a parent from uh, Sherburne. Wonderful guy, he's done obviously uh, quite a few uh, pools. So the pool testing's really working and it's uh, and it's been uh, a super positive thing. We still have uh, families who prefer that their students be remote, uh, and that's fine. Uh, it's not without its challenges, but it's, we're, we're working through those uh, challenges. Uh, to date, we have a hundred and twenty-seven students across the system who are learning remotely. That's forty-two at the high school, twenty-seven at the middle school, thirty-eight at Chicaring and twenty at Pine Hill School. Um, so uh. No news on uh, on whether remote learning will be an option for next year or whether it will be necessary. We just have to stay tuned. We're certainly used to uh, sudden changes. Uh, I will say that um, uh, the um. Late buses, we are bringing late buses back to the region. Uh, so that uh, we can have some more after-school activities. Uh, those will run on um, uh. Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays. You know, the, the, in the big picture, we're feeling as if uh, we're returning to normal and it's almost like a collective sigh of relief. Uh, we're still uh, always gonna be scarred somewhat by this experience, but um, overall, things are improving. We do have some challenges with traffic, as you're all aware. We still think it's getting better. But uh, that's because we've had to make adjustments and our families adjust. Remember, when we started to bring students back in larger numbers at the region especially. Uh, to the four days a week where we were really basically only having half the schools in uh, two days. Uh, a week on the front end and half, the other half on the other two days of the week at the, on the tail end. So when everyone came back, that's like having the first week of school and just remember, the first week of school is never fun. People try and figure out uh, what, when to arrive and where to meet their kids. We're already seeing uh, some improvements in that regard, we've held the buses a little bit. Uh, we obviously ask for people's patience, we ask, uh, we thank the police for their uh, cooperation. Uh, Pine Hill School's been able to uh, to use the um, access road for the buses, that's been hugely important. Uh, along those lines, uh, the Pine Hill Lane uh, is under discussion right now. Uh, for uh, completion, we obviously um, can't take a position as a school system. We uh, we, we do uh, think it would be a wonderful thing if that Pine Hill Lane was open. Because we do have major traffic concerns up there and it will be uh, it will be an article on the town meeting in Sherburne. Um, so that's important news that's coming up, that town meeting's on five fifteen, uh, May fifteenth. And the election which will follow it, it is, it is a uh, an article that will uh, need to pass at town meeting and on the ballot. So um, so the town meeting's on the fifteenth of May, the uh, election itself is on June fifteenth. Uh, Dover, by the way, which also has plenty of important things going on, including the uh, community center that Dorothea referenced before. Has its annual town meeting on uh, May first, that's right around the corner. And their election on uh, May seventeenth. Let's see, um. I wanted to also uh, bring folks up to speed on our end-of-year events, because there've been a lot of questions about that. Uh, the schools obviously send this information out, but you should know as well. That we are planning to have our senior awards outside this year on the turf. Uh, on the first of, of June, with a rain date of June second, there are rain dates for everything. Because we're not gonna be able to move inside. Uh, we have graduation scheduled for the third with the rain date of June, uh, with the rain date of the fourth. There will be a senior celebration, not to be confused with a senior or junior, senior prom. Uh, it is for seniors only, uh, but that's on the twenty-first of May. We will know that we will have uh, a similar kind of celebration for our eighth graders that we had last year. Uh, on the seventeenth of June, uh, where the kids will be released and can drive through. The eighth graders can drive through and the faculty uh, kind of says, wishes them well. Uh, and then uh, the um, the fifth grade. On uh, the eighteenth, uh, at both schools. Uh, will have fifth grade parades similar to last year, those are at twelve thirty. Um, obviously, just in case I've got my info wrong or if I've written something down wrong. Watch your uh, flyers from the, the schools in terms of uh, the specifics on that. So uh, you know, we're, we're in very good shape. Uh, one other important announcement I wanted to make is the, the uh, spring musical. Uh, set up out on the practice football field, beautiful thing. Uh, really, really hoping for the best for the kids, they're working so hard on it and the families that have participated, some are probably on this uh, Zoom tonight. A lot of people are contributing to make this a worthwhile effort for the kids. Kudos to these folks, they, they don't take no for an answer and they've uh, pushed really hard to get this done. Gotten support from the Board of Health to do it outside and um, uh, what, what did they refer to as a? Much auditorium al fresco or something like that, but basically you can set up your uh, your lawn chairs and watch. And it's uh, starts this Thursday and Friday with, I believe, two showings on Saturday. The uh, tickets can be accessed uh, through ticketstage.com. So uh, that is pretty much it on the reopening and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Uh, do we have any school committee members that have any questions? Liz, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for all those updates and all the work that's gone into everything. Uh, a number one concern of mine is that while the numbers are fairly good that people are participating in. Um, pool testing, I still personally feel like it's kind of low. Um, and I'm wondering how we can spread the word more and really get more people involved. Cause like you said, this isn't going anywhere and honestly, like, not only will this keep our school community safe. But I really do think that if we're testing all these kids often, it's keeping the broader community safer as well. And then it allows all these sports to keep happening, um, which I know everybody wants. So I'm just, I feel like I'm not seeing enough, um. Like if somebody asked me, how do I sign up, it's hard to find the link. And maybe when we do, as a schools like put out that our numbers were great and everyone was negative. And by the way, if you wanna join us next week, like, sign up here, I know that could be sort of a nightmare of like. Every week there's new names and people being added, but I do think it's critical and hopefully it will make it easier for next year that. More will just be involved, so I'm, I'm happy to help if I can, but I think it's really important.
It, it's a really good point Liz, and you're right, our numbers are not, if you consider we. Have roughly twenty-one hundred students, we're not there yet. Uh, so we have a ways to go, one of the things that we have done uh, at the region is. Uh, we've insisted on our athletes who participate in high-risk sports, it's deemed high-risk by the state. that they participate. And that has not been popular and it has not been done across the Tri Valley League. In fact, I think we're one of the outliers on that. So we have been sort of aggressive. But at the end of the day, we're hoping that people will appreciate, instead of like threatening them, they'll appreciate the merits and the values, the value of doing this. And so your point is well taken. We have been careful not to advertise, hey, everybody, we were negative this week. Because then we have to advertise every time it's positive and it gets, it can get a little dicey. Because they're not individuals. These are pools and people start to panic. Oh, my God, there's ten people in that pool. Is that many? Was it that many who were sick? And it's usually in our positive pools, it was one or two people, was never more than that. So, but your point is well taken and maybe there's a way for us to more. And I know Beth has, Beth McCoy has done a great job in working on our COVID site. If we could maybe find a way to advertise that a little more broadly or include it in our, our newsletters. I, I, I want to think about that, but it's a good suggestion.
Do you have any more questions or comments for Andrew? Andrew, are you all set with the up to up? Sarah, go ahead.
I just wanted to echo, you know, the points about pool testing and how important it is and what, you know, how, how important it is to have this additional layer of protection, especially as we don't expect that our youngest students are going to be vaccinated likely until next year. And so I just wanted to piggyback on, on the, the point of how can we spread the word? How can we market this? How can we increase participation? Perhaps one of the things that we could do is try to dispel some of the myths, right? You know, the point was made earlier about that this isn't involving, you know, great disruption to students' ability to participate in school unless they're themselves COVID positive. So perhaps, you know, making clear to people that it doesn't involve extra quarantines. I know that there were concerns raised early on in the process about how, you know, invasive the test might be, especially for the smallest kids. Well, the reports that I'm getting, it's a non-event. They actually self swab. It's a shallow swab. They all marched down to the nurse's office and they do it together. And I just, I really do hope that, that more people will sign up because the more information we have, the safer will be.
Great suggestions. Totally. I agree.
Colleen?
I'd just like to add that with a lot of people returning from April travel, now would probably be a really good time to push for more testing, pooled testing as people return, especially because we're still kind of in the window where maybe we catch some of the cases. I just think it, it might be prudent for the schools to do a push at this time. I also have one other question. It's about the vaccination of, our vaccination levels of staff as well as the outlook for vaccinating students. High school, a number of high school students would be eligible now. I'm just curious about the status of our staff vaccinations and what the outlook is for our students.
You know, I don't have the actual numbers off the top of my head. Do you, Beth?
Yeah, so we have to be careful with patient confidentiality and respect, you know, the privacy of our educators. But for those who reported to us, we know that seventy seven, basically seventy seven percent of our faculty have either gotten the vaccine or told us they got the vaccine. So.
And, and, and of course, there are people who don't want to get it. And so that's, that's probably going to be an issue you're going to have to tackle this summer or the state. Well, as to whether or not they're willing to make people. That's a battle that I'm sure that nobody wants to take on. But, and the other thing, the other point I was going to make on the, the, oh, well, to finish the thought, the, you're right. And I actually heard yesterday that some system was trying to arrange for vaccination of kids over sixteen. I don't know where I saw that, but I think that that's probably coming. The schools, remember, the schools, we we're often asked to be everything for everybody and it's hard to do. Like we don't. Our nurses have gone above and beyond this year. They, they, they have never had in their contract that they're going to do all this contact tracing. Or, I mean, the amount of extra work that has been heaped on them is really incredible. I think we probably, we need to think long and hard about whether or not we want to get into the vaccination business. But I don't, that doesn't stop us from letting people know where you can get vaccinations. I don't think that that would be a bad thing. The, and the, I think that the, based on what I've heard, that the outlook is promising in terms of the younger kids. For example, I saw yesterday in a news report how accurate it was, I do not know. But they were claiming that they've been testing and they feel confident that pregnant women could, can be vaccinated. So that's, you know, that's serious progress, but there's always going to be a segment of our population that's not going to be comfortable with this. What I was going to say before about the pool testing is remember where we were when we started. I mean, we're still getting requests. They're trickling in though. They're just not coming in fast enough. And to, to all of your points, I think we can push harder, but they initially, in full disclosure, I wasn't in on it. I wasn't on board with the pool testing. I didn't think it was worth the effort. And you're right, we've learned it's not so traumatic. It doesn't traumatize the kids. It's a piece of cake. And so I think people are getting that word, but I think an extra push would be a good thing.
Sorry. Thank you, Andrew. I think we have, Maggie, did you have one more question?
No. Um, I had a question about graduation because I have had a few families ask. And I don't, I'm sure that communication's gone out to the kids. I don't know why, but people are confused. What is going to be allowed for observers or visitors at graduation? Just family, you know, what's, what's okay with that?
I don't know if John is on. I saw him earlier, but I don't think so.
I am Dr. Q.
Oh, do you mind speaking to that?
Yeah, not a problem, not a problem. Hi Maggie. Yeah, so we're following the state guidelines, which as we know, can certainly change. But the last updates that we had received were outdoors and for Desi feedback, they said six family members. So what our plans are is to submit a proposal to the Board of Health to have our students socially distanced at the time with masks on and then parents in pods of six. So, and then that way we would still be able to conduct the graduation pretty much normal. There was still some question about should anybody be handing off the diploma or should it be put on a table? So time will tell on that. I think we, we would be prepared for whatever is allowed. But that's really what it's going to be. At this point, we are not necessarily looking at lots of community members beyond the families, but stay tuned. But that's what we have told our PTO and other senior moms that we definitely are excited about having the graduation on the Norris Earl Field and having our student speakers and having it as normal as we possibly can.
Well, just on behalf of a parent of not a senior, but you know, many other families, I cannot tell you all the work I know you guys have done putting in to get these end of year celebrations off the ground and how much this means to families. And just thank you. I know it takes a ton of organization and lots of volunteers. So I really appreciate it.
We're really excited too, to, to be able to have it back on the Norris Earl Field.
Yeah, absolutely. And calling to your question about teenagers getting vaccinated. As a parent of a seventeen year old with lots of buddies who are also seventeen, a lot of these kids have jobs as, you know, waitstaff and that sort of thing. My awareness is that for any kids in this community whose families wanted them to get vaccinated, it's pretty easy. You know, I signed three kids up this weekend on CVS, got them in, you know, on Sunday. So I do think that there are a lot of kids going through that process, both on the state site and also through CBS and other, you know, smaller providers. And at least amongst the folks I know, there's a lot of enthusiasm about that. So I think that it's, it's pretty available for any kids who want it and, and kids know about it. So I'm feeling good about teenagers getting in for those shots.
Yeah. And just to quickly add, because Maggie and I have sons in the same grade, it, it does have to be Pfizer. So that's the only catch. You have to find Pfizer's the only one approved for sixteen and up, I believe.
This is great. I mean, I feel like this all sounds like life is normalizing slightly. I love to hear what John said, that there's six members in the family that contend. I think this is all wonderful news. Do we have any further questions or comments for Andrew before we move on to the next item? Dennis, go ahead.
So I just wanted to confirm, again, thank you. I echo all the sentiments. Everybody's done a great job. Andrew or Beth or somebody, are you taking the message back to try to, the, you know, let a fire under the, the advertising campaign on the pool testing? Or is that something that you guys are going to evaluate and figure out whether necessary?
Oh, no, we're, we're totally on board with that, Dennis. We will, we'll, we'll make a push. Either I will write something or we'll have something go out from the principals. It may be one of those things that you know, who it comes from matters. So maybe it's the Health and Hygiene Subcommittee. But I think that the, the point about there being a lot of confusion about, you know, why sign up? It, it just, it's so true. People don't know. They don't have their facts straight. They, they haven't really looked into it and you just have to literally light the fire. So yes, we will do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. It wasn't clear to me that that was, that was an action coming out. So I appreciate you confirming that. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, I am going to go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. We're going to have a business office update from Dawn.
Yes. Good evening. So I've included in your packet, I know you each know your own individual budget, but I think it's good to see the sort of our pre K through twelve district in total. So I provided a summary of each of your budgets and some of the key budget drivers. I think it was an amazing year from a budget standpoint and that they're all increases were either negative or below one percent. I don't know if that'll ever happen again, but we're going to relish in that fact at least for fiscal year twenty two. I also wanted to highlight to you your town meetings. Dover's is May first, as Andrew said, and Sherburne's is May fifteenth, where our budgets will be officially approved. I also wanted to share that, as you know, we built our budgets on a normal return to school. So no additional PPE, no additional staff if we needed for social distancing. But rest assured that there is plenty of COVID nineteen funding that has been trickling in. It's, we got a flood just recently with the American Rescue Plan, American Rescue Plan. So we have plenty of safety nets for next year to pivot, adapt to whatever we need to do. And I will update each committee in your individual meetings as to what those dollar amounts look like. And the good thing is those, the grants that we've been receiving and the funding are right now good for like fiscal year twenty two through fiscal year twenty four. So we're looking at, you know, of a, maybe a multiple year recovery from this. But there's going to be funding there for us to make sure that we catch ourselves up and get us back to where we were before. It's not even better. And then I just wanted to update you guys on the director of facilities search. So as you know, we did do a search back in late August, but we weren't successful. And so given all that we had going on with the school hybrid and wondering what, what we were going to do, it wasn't the best environment to do a second search right away. So we brought upon, brought in a facilities consultant who's been working with me two days a week since mid September. And that has been fabulous, but we are now going to probably post the job at the first of May and see what the market looks like again. Paul, with his experience, knows some other places that we can post the position. So we have high hopes that we can maybe reach a broader audience and find someone perfect to take over. The other thing that I didn't put in here is that over the time he spent on our campus, working with all of our staff, he does feel that the current staffing structure that we have is what we need, because that was one of the questions that we had always when you have a change in one of their larger upper level positions, you know, are we organized the way we should be structured the way we are? He feels that we are. So that's very good to know that the only thing we really do need to do is find a new director of facility. So I will keep you updated on that progress, but it will be posted probably sometime next week.
Great. Thank you. Before.
Leslie, can I make one quick point that I had failed to mention before? And Dawn triggered it for me about the town meetings. With an election happening in Sherburne on the fifteenth, it might, and we have a joint school committee meeting scheduled for that evening. And I think that is a, is there an individual meeting that night as well, Dawn?
Yeah, I don't know if they have, but it's definitely the joint.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that we move that to the sixteenth. And obviously we don't need to make that decision right away, but I'm just planting that seed with all the members. And then if the, the chairs can get back to me if that's acceptable with your groups. And that way.
Sixteen, the joint?
Move the joint meeting to the sixteenth. You'll know who your new members are.
For Sherburne, right.
Sorry, I didn't mention that sooner.
Thank you. I also wanted to just mention something quickly before we addressed Dawn's presentation. I got a message from me, the president of PTO, and she also said that they would be sending out email regarding the pool testing. She mentioned it's going to be email, Facebook and via the room parents. Does anyone have a question for Dawn? Any school committee members?
And I'll just add, because I couldn't, it was drawn a blank, but it's Adam Henry as our
Sorry.
coordinator. I knew it was Adam, but his last name wasn't coming into my head. So Adam Henry, and he's been fabulous.
I apologize for that. And I see Shoba has her hand up.
Yeah. So Dawn, I just have a quick question. I, I did read that school lunches are back on as free again. Can you kind of say, are we providing free lunches and breakfast for the students?
So we, we, it was for, for most of the year, it was already known that was through June thirtieth. So they just announced they were going to continue that for the next year, but you have the option to decide whether or not. So Desi is from the state of Massachusetts, is working with all of our nutrition directors, directors to sort of organize that and decide what the process is going to be. And so that is an individual district decision. So Janelle Madden, our Director of Food Services, will listen to what Desi has to say and we'll make that announcement once we've signed up to go that route for fiscal year twenty two.
Okay, so so is right now it's not free, but for next year it could be?
No, 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 it's been free all year and it will be through the end of the school year. Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
At first they only did till December thirty first or till when the funds ran out. But at some point late in the fall, they extended it all the way to the end of the school year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for Dawn? No? Okay, thank you, Dawn. Don't mind my trial in the background. Next up, we have the policy second read, the harassment policy second read. I would like to ask Lynn Collins to please touch on some main points here.
Thank you, Leslie. Happy to. So as, as Leslie mentioned, this is the second read of the harassment policy. So hopefully everyone's had a chance to fully digest the pages and pages of policy and investigation procedures that, that, you know, were provided. Basically, the genesis for this policy was the desire of the administration to have some protocols in place to respond to hate incidents and hate crimes, which as we all know, have occurred on our campuses in the past. So look, when we looked at the harassment policy where the protocols would, would live, we realized that the Mass Association of School Committees, who does, who provides sort of policy models for us and on which we had models for us, um, and on which we had based our existing harassment policies on, had merged, uh, their sexual harassment policy with their, uh, student to student harassment policy, which is, which is fine. So our main change was to, um, revise the policy to have it more closely match the MASC models and to add the hate incident language. The hate incident language comes directly from, Stella has strong opinions about this policy. Comes from, uh, state and federal laws around hate crimes. Uh, so there is really no, um, you know, license on, you know, our end in drafting those provisions. Um, the, the one thing that I did take license with, uh, as compared to the MASC models is, you know, as I had mentioned during the first read, the MASC, when they merged the policies, they, they removed the, the coverage of staff and harassment is between staff and didn't put it anywhere else. So I, I left it in as it was previously. So it, so this policy covers student to student harassment, staff to student harassment, staff to staff harassment, covers all of it. Um, and then investigation procedures, because we had, we have very thorough bullying, um, prevention, investigation procedures. We followed very closely, um, on those, um, procedures for harassment, um, because there's a lot of overlap. And a lot of great procedures in there that we could piggyback on. So, um, that's that. Uh, the, the new, not new, but I just stay tuned because in addition to all the state and federal laws and regulations that govern this policy, with the new administration, one of the executive orders issued by the Biden administration is to take, um, a wholesale review of the regulations that were issued by the Trump administration in 2020. Uh, specifically, I mean, mainly as it applies to the investigation procedures and the due process requirements that, that are included in, in the Trump administration regulations. But we don't anticipate, given that these are regulations, um, you know, the, I'm not expecting any action or change to take place, you know, this, this academic year and next academic year. And, you know, probably for another couple of years, it's going to be before all of, you know, public comment and feedback, uh, takes place. In order to change the existing regulations. So stay tuned, but for the next couple of years, we have what we have. So, yeah. And if anyone has any questions about the revised policy, I'm, I'm happy to hear them.
Thank you, Lynn. Do we have any questions from the school committee members? Colleen, go ahead.
Uh, first I'd just like to thank you guys for all the work you've done on this, uh, the policy committee. It's no, it's not a, a small feat. So thank you. Um, I'm curious about the appeals process. If someone is, um, is not happy with, you know, the findings, the final findings, is there an appeal process?
No, there's, there is, you know, it's a good question. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, put the dog down. They can, uh, they can appeal to the Title IX coordinator. But I think that's the extent of the appeal process. It's a good question and I, I can, I can look at it more deeply unless, uh, Beth or Andrew have, have an idea of how it works.
I, I agree. I believe it's the Title IX coordinator, um, who happens to be me. And then if, if things aren't, um, resolved at that level, they can, um, move out towards the unbuds people at the, city and town level.
And they can also file legal actions at the MCAD and the EOC.
Do we have any other questions for Lynn or anyone else on the committee?
One quick question. The reporting form, is that, is that like a paper or is that something that people can do online? I'm just thinking about accessibility to report something if somebody's having an issue.
Right now it's on paper. Um, but it doesn't necessarily have to stay that way. Now that we have the language approved potentially by the school committees, we can move in that direction and make it easily accessible for sure. And that makes lives easier for, you know, families and students, but also administrators too.
Yeah, I don't think it mentions specifically in the policy, which I guess I wouldn't think that it would, um, but it, it appeared as though it was going to be some kind of a paper form. I just want to see, was that contemplated in the context of this process?
Is the bullying, um, complaint form online or on paper?
Um, so if students or parents were going to report a bullying incident, it's, um, on paper or via contacting the school administrator or trusted adults in the building. Um, on the backend, the administrators do have, um, a Google form that we then, um, use to document all of the finding, the research and findings that we, uh, we conduct. And then, um, obviously we have to report that to our student information system to stay on record. But again, that's something that we can look into too. And now that, um, many of our websites are interconnected with policies and procedures and discipline and practices, including DSAID, you know, I think there's places we can put, um, such forms that would be easily accessible for parents, no matter on which website they're on. And while I have the mic, I would just like, also like to thank Lynn and Angie and Sarah for doing this hard work. I feel like every other week I'm emailing Lynn with a new policy saying, oh, what about this one? What about this one? And she never says no. So thank you very much for your efforts and your team's efforts.
Derek, go ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you to Lynn. Um, as a policy subcommittee member, I really can't take any credit for the work on this. This was, this was Lynn and as everyone knows, I mean, the information here, it's technical, it's detailed. And it's just so important for fostering the type of environment that we want to in our schools. So thank you to Lynn for leading this charge.
And I want to second that because I am, I have not been helpful to Lynn. So Lynn has done a fantastic job.
Uh, Anne, go ahead.
Sorry, I have a quick thought. If, if there's a way for us to put links in the policies to forms, that might be a helpful thing. Um, since it's PDFs, it's really hard to access them, but maybe adding links would make it more accessible. Um, and also I'd love to thank the policy committee workers. One of the things they've been doing two is making, taking out specific names. So of, like, you don't have to report to, you know, Barbara Brown principal and, you know, listing all the principles. So, so they're making it so that it's a longer lasting document and they don't have to keep going back in to update, which is tedious and time consuming, but really valuable work. So thank you for that as well.
Sorry, uh, you guys are going to hear my three-year-old screaming. Um, I apologize for that. Lynn, I want to thank you too. This, this work is very comprehensive and I appreciate all of your time on this. If we do not have any further questions, I would like to move forward, uh, with a vote on this policy. I think I would start with the regional school committee. Maggie, if you'd like to have your members take themselves off mute.
Sure. Um, I'd just like to invite a motion for us to approve the harassment policy JBA as, um, presented in our packet.
I second the motion or start, is that, is that the way you-
You can make the motion, Shoba.
Okay. All right. I'll, I, I make the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? Kate Potter, second. So motion made by Shoba Frey. Kate Potter, second. Can everyone take theirselves off mute, please? Um, Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Shoba Frey?
Yes, Shoba Frey.
Uh, Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Angie?
Hey Sherburne, if you want to go ahead and take yourselves off mute, do I have a motion to approve the harassment policy as presented?
Amanda Brown, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Megan Page, second.
And I'll do, is there any discussion? So hearing none, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Dennis?
Dennis Quan, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes.
Thank you very much. And the Dover School Committee members, could you please take yourselves off mute? Do I have a motion to approve the harassment policy as presented in our packets this evening?
So moved. Sarah Gutierrez, done.
Do I have a second?
Colleen Burt, second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call. Uh, Sarah Gutierrez, done.
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Liz Grossman?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Mark Hailey?
Mark Hailey, yes.
And Leslie Leon, yes. Thank you very much. And we'll be moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the interim superintendent search team update, which I believe Kate Potter will lead us on.
Thank you. Yes. So, uh, the interim search team has been very, very busy since we last met and gave, well, since this group last met and gave you an update. Um, we were very grateful to have Dr. Brown and Beth McCoy join our search, church team as some administrative help. Um, and I want to thank this small team for working hard, especially over the April break. Uh, we originally tried to set the schedules so that we wouldn't be doing work over the April break and it just didn't end up that way. And folks were willing to take time and, uh, we didn't want to miss any of the good people who, who were applying. So I'm really grateful for all that time. Um, so since we last gave you an update, uh, we have closed out our application deadline. We spent a lot of time reviewing applications and we selected some candidates for our initial screening interviews. We conducted those over the last several days and, um, have come up with two finalists who will present to you in a moment. Um, we also developed, well, before the interviews, I'm reading this out of order. We developed interview questions and in an evaluation rubric. Um, and then it was just last night that we voted on the finalist. It feels like we've been spending a lot of time together. Um, so I am excited to announce to you that our two finalists that we're bringing forward to you, our Dr. John Dougherty. Thank you, Beth. Um, Dr. Dougherty is currently the superintendent of schools in the Reading Public Schools. Prior to this role, he served as an interim superintendent of schools, assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and assessment. Was the principal of the Arthur W. Coolidge Middle School and was a science teacher and department chair for the Reading Public Schools. And then Kathleen Smith is currently the interim superintendent of the Waymouth Public Schools. Before that, she was an interim superintendent for the Salem Public Schools. And before that, she was the superintendent of schools for Brockton, Mass. for many years. She's also served as director of community schools, school adjustment counselor, and as an elementary and secondary education teacher in Brockton. Um, the resumes for these candidates will be posted on the district website shortly. So going from here, um, should this joint school committee vote the slate forward, we will, um, we have a quick timeline here. We are hoping to meet in person, um, and we have gotten the approval of the, from the boards of health, the afternoon of May 5th, which is an early dismissal day. Um, the, um, school committees will interview the finalists on the evening of May 5th and the administrators and, um, other folks during the day on May 5th. Um, of course, practicing safety guidelines. And then going forward, we would love the help of school committee volunteers to assist with reference checks. Um, and then finally, if all goes smoothly, we would hope to reach an agreement, um, for, um, picking one person, uh, the week of May 10th. So I read that sort of out of order. Um, and I'd like to entertain any questions or comments before we move to a vote. And please, anyone on the search team, if I've left anything out, just jump in.
Do we, I'm sure we have many questions. Who would like to go first? No one. Judy, go ahead.
No, I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you very much. You guys did a, uh, really great job getting this done quickly and efficiently and it, it's really wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone, uh, Dennis, go ahead?
Any details on sort of, uh, number of applicants or, um, any themes that came out of the process that, um, were of note?
Well, we're, we're not allowed to speak to the process to, up to this point. It's confidential and so we're really only allowed to speak to the, the finalists who were presenting here because now it's public. I will say personally, I felt like we had a really great, um, group to pick from. And yeah, I was, I was happy with the pool we had.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Kate or the committee? Lynn, go ahead.
So will the school committee interviews be in person? Or on Zoom again?
Yeah, they will be in person. Um, I don't think I, I, I don't think I was very articulate about that. We, we've gotten the approval by the boards of health to meet in person. Um, we will also, and Sarah, please jump in and tell me if I'm, if I'm not speaking correctly. We will also be, um, trying to record it or zoom it out so that folks can be watching as well, but so that the school committee members can meet these folks in person.
So can you please confirm? So that would be, do you have a time on the evening of May 5th that we would be meeting them?
We haven't nailed down the times yet. Um, we, we've been moving so quickly that just today we were kind of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. So, um, we know these two folks are available on May 5th. And it works out well because it's a half day. Um, so no, we'll, we'll try to get that to you as soon as possible because that's right around the corner.
Okay. And then the, you mentioned the week of May 10th to make a final decision. Did you have a date in mind that week? That we would meet and again, would that be in person or that be Zoom?
Um, I think that we had talked about hoping to aim for the Monday, the May 10th, if that was going to, um, be possible with the other committees' meetings. And we had also talked about targeting like one interview at five and one around seven so that they'd leave it at reasonable time. But, but when we spoke about that, we were also, you know, trying to work with the candidates in terms of their schedules as well. So just as people are penciling in their-
Right. Those were our ballparks. Yeah. Thank you, Maggie.
Okay. So just over in, may 5th, five and seven potentially, and then May 10th, that Monday, it sounds like. Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments from any committee members? Shoba, go ahead.
I just, um, wanted to ask, how long is the interim superintendent for? Um, is it just a year or what is the?
One year, yes.
Okay.
And, and we will launch the search for the permanent, um, superintendent, but, uh, this fall.
Okay. And just, I guess just to follow up in terms of just questions, are we supposed to give the same questions to each of the candidates? To be fair, or like, is it, is there a process or is it just?
Yes. So that's, thank you for asking that. Um, yes, we do give this, we do ask the same questions of each candidate. And, um, we will be, that's on our next quick turnaround list. We will be figuring out and soliciting from all of you, questions that then we'll hone down and make sure that they are specific for the interim role. Before we have these interviews. And then what we do, Shoba, is usually once we have those questions, we, we assign people to read a question or two, i- if you're comfortable with that. And, um, and it just kind of works well and it, and we do ask the same questions of each candidate.
And do you want school committee members to email you, Kate, if they'd like to volunteer? And do you want school committee members to email you, Kate, if they'd like to volunteer to check references?
That would be wonderful. Yes, please let me know if you're happy to do that. It, it, it's extremely helpful because it ends up being, you know, it can end up being a bunch of phone calls.
Okay, does everyone feel comfortable with what Kate presented this evening? Okay. I thank you, Kate, and thank you to everyone on that committee. I have no doubt you guys have spent countless hours together.
Do we need to make a motion to accept the slate?
Yes.
Do we?
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Maggie. I wanted to make sure we had all our questions first.
Okay. So Maggie, do you want to go ahead with the regional first?
Sure. And I do see that Mr. Green has his hand up, but we don't, we can't do community comments except at the beginning. So I'm happy, or if anyone, you want to reach out to any of us, school committee members, we're happy to talk offline with anybody. I just don't want you to think we're not seeing you. Um, sure. Do I have a motion at the region to accept the slate of finalists presented by the interim superintendent search team of John Dougherty and Kathleen Smith as our finalists for interim superintendent?
Collins, so moved.
Motion by Lynn Collins, second?
Second by Shova Frye. Oh, sorry.
It's okay. A second by Judy Miller. And if you could take yourselves off mute. Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
Kate Potter?
Kate Potter, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Shova Frye?
Shova Frye, yes.
And Maggie Sharon? Yes.
Great, thank you. And Angie, would you like to go ahead?
Yes. So Sherburne, if you'll go ahead and take yourselves off mute, do I have a motion to accept the slate for the interim superintendents as presented this evening?
So moved, Dennis Quon.
Okay, Dennis is moved. And then a second?
Megan Page, second.
Thank you, Megan. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll pull for a vote. Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Quon, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes.
Thank you, Angie. Dover School Committee members, please take yourself off mute. Do I have a motion to accept the slate of finalists presented by the interim superintendent search team this evening?
Mark Healy?
Go ahead.
Really so moved.
There was a second?
Colleen Burt, second.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will take a vote. Liz Grossman?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Sarah Gutierrez, done?
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Mark Healy?
Mark Healy, yes.
And Leslie Leon, yes. Thank you so much to this committee. Thank you very much. And lastly, we have the consent agenda. We have three items, the minutes of January 19th, 2021, February 1st, 2021, and February 9th, 2021. Do we have any discussions or questions? Hearing none?
I know, sorry, I don't have discussion on that, but I did want to share with the committee members that we, we will organize ourselves with the questions. I know last time that we did questions in small groups so that they could be worked on without being a violation of open meeting law. We will recreate those groups that you were in. If you're new, then we will probably give you to a group and give you the questions from the last time that we had the interview to kind of look at with a new eye for whether or not they would be appropriate for this round of interviews. And I would just ask if people could get those back. I'll send them out tonight. If people could get them back by, you know, over the weekend, that would be fantastic so that we can put them together in a question list for the actual interview next week. Sorry. Maggie?
Thank you. Sarah, go ahead with a question.
I just wanted to say a thank you to all of the members of this search team and especially to Beth McCoy and Barbara Brown for their invaluable contributions and for giving up much of their time over school vacation week. It's been a pleasure to work with this group, a great collaborative effort.
Thank you. Okay, I will just repeat what I just said on the last agenda item. We have the consent agenda with the minutes for January 19th, 2021, February 1st, 2021, and February 9th, 2021. Any discussions or questions on those? Hearing none, do I have a, actually, I have to have this approved by committee. So Maggie, go ahead with the regional.
If you could take yourself off mute, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as stated by Leslie?
Anne Hovey, so moved.
Thank you. Motion by Anne, second?
Judy Miller, second.
Second by Judy Miller. Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
Shova?
Shova Frye, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Kate?
Kate Potter, yes.
And Maggie Sharon, yes.
Thank you, Maggie. Angie, go ahead.
So Sherburne, if you'll go ahead and take yourselves off mute, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Okay, Amanda, I'll go with you for a motion. And then do I have a second?
Megan Page, second.
Great. So can you do the poll voting now? So it's Dennis?
Dennis Quon, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda I mentioned earlier?
Liz Grossman, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Sarah Gutierrez, done, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I see that you're all off mute. Mark Healy?
Mark Healy, yes.
Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Sarah Gutierrez, done?
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Liz Grossman?
Liz Grossman, yes.
And Leslie Leon, yes. I believe that's it for the meeting. I would like to see raised hands, all those in favor of adjourning. Wonderful. Thank you, everyone.